Council meeting for August the 27th. All of our council is present today. We're going to begin our meeting with an invocation that will be led by Pastor Drew Arliszkas of the Mountain Vista Bible Church. Following the invocation, I will invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And then following the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to ask that we remain standing for a moment of silence to honor our recently deceased Senator John McCain. I had, I think many in this room had the privilege of interacting with Senator McCain, and it's going to be a long time, if ever, before we have the privilege of being served by such a great man. So I appreciate you in joining us in standing for a moment of silence after the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor.
Heavenly Father, we do feel a great loss at the passing of Senator McCain. We thank you for his life and the purposes with which he lived it. I pray that you be a present comfort to his family. We're just grateful for who he was and that his example would live on. Father, now for today, I pray that you grant the council before me wisdom and compassion. Lord, we thank you for the city of Mesa, how you have blessed us as we continue to look to your hand for guidance and for all that we need. Lord, we are grateful. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless John McCain.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is awards and recognitions, and Mr. Freeman reminded me that we failed to recognize it. Councilmember Glover received an award at our League of Cities and Towns conventions this week for eight years of service, and he's termed out and will be greatly missed on this council, so we appreciate his great service on this council and acknowledge that important award that he received at our state convention last week. The next item on our agenda is to take actions on the consent agenda. We'd invite Mr. Kevin Christopher forward to read the consent agenda. Ms. Mickelson, I know we've received some blue cards to speak on items on the consent agenda, and those are both for Agenda Item 7B and 7E. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have any additional cards? Okay, so thank you, Mr. Christopher. If you could please note that Items 7B and 7E will be removed.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, the blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Palace Nail Lounge, 1940 West Rio Salado Parkway. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for Timeout Sports Bar and Grill, 1762 South Greenfield Road. Item 4A, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for rigging and over-hire stagehand services for the Mesa Art Center as requested by the Arts and Culture Department. Item 4B, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for auctioneering services for the Fleet Services, Police, and Business Services Departments. This contract provides revenue to the city, and there is no cost to the city. Item 4C, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for network equipment for the Mesa Public Libraries as requested by the Library Services Department. Item 4D, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for audiovisual services for the Mesa Convention Center as requested by the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department. Item 4E, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for fabrication and installation of park signs for the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department. Item 4F, act on contract to purchase one replacement automated side-loading refuse truck for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. Item 4G, act on contract to purchase four replacement CNG-powered, heavy-duty front-loading refuse trucks for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. Item 4H, act on dollar limit increase to the term contract for LED roadway fixtures for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Transportation Department. The increase is funded by Lifecycle Program Funding. Item 4I, act on dollar limit increase to the term contract for herbicide application and landscaping services for the Transportation Department. Item 5A, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement concerning the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant and a lease agreement with the town of Gilbert regarding certain properties surrounding the plant. Item 5B, act on resolution extinguishing a 20-foot public utilities and facilities easement and two drainage easements located at 5139 East Indigo Street to accommodate development of a new storage facility. This was requested by the property owner. Item 5C, act on resolution extinguishing a public utilities and facilities easement located on the 200 block of East Main Street to accommodate the development of the grid project. This was requested by the developer. Item 5D, act on resolution extinguishing a drainage easement located at 1723 North Banning to accommodate development of a warehouse facility. This was requested by the property owner. Item 5E, act on resolution supporting the Salt River Agricultural Improvement and Power District's proposed Southeast Power Link Project and the associated application for a certificate of environmental compatibility filed to the Arizona Power Plant and Transmission Line Sighting Committee. Item 6A, act on resolution vacating a portion of South Udall Right-of-Way between Main Street and First Avenue. This is to facilitate development of a mixed-use project on private property for residential and commercial development. Item 6B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a permanent public right-of-way and utility easement and underground parking structure agreement with Suburban Land Reserve Incorporated to accept an easement over a portion of South Udall between Main Street and First Avenue. This easement will allow for construction and maintenance of public roadway improvements on and above an underground parking structure developed on the abandoned portion of South Udall. Item 7A, act on ordinance regarding ZOM 18-00149, the 9,800 through 9,900 blocks of East Hampton Avenue on the south side and the 1,400 block of South Crisbon Road west side. This is located at the northwest corner of US 60 and Crisbon Road, rezoned to allow for an office and commercial development. Item 7B has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 7C, act on ordinance regarding ZOM 18-00310, the 1,700 to 1,900 blocks of South Horn on the west side, the 1,700 to 1,900 blocks of South Hobson on the east side, and the 600 to 800 blocks of Otto Center on the south side. This is located north of Baseline Road and east of Mesa Drive, rezoned and site plan reviewed to allow for development of an industrial park. Item 7D, act on ordinance regarding ZOM 18-00221, the 1,100 block of North Miller Street on the east side and the 1,000 block of East Brown Road south side located on the south side of Brown Road and west of Staple Drive, rezoned and site plan reviewed to allow for development of a single-family residence. Item 7E has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 7F, act on ordinance regarding ZOM 18-00360, the 3,100 block of East Broadway Road located east of Lindsay Road on the south side of Broadway Road, rezoned and site plan reviewed to allow for development of an attached single-residence development. Item 7G, act on ordinance regarding ZOM 18-00335, 6606 East McKellips Road located west of Power Road on the north side of McKellips Road, rezoned and site plan modification to add a restaurant drive-thru. Item 8A, act on ordinance regarding ZOM 18-00121, the 3,600 to 5,200 blocks of South Ellsworth Road east side, the 9,200 to 10,800 blocks of East Elliott Road south side, and the 3,600 to 6,000 blocks of the South Signal Butte Road alignment on the west side. This is located south of Elliott Road between Ellsworth and Signal Butte, major amendments to the Eastmark Community Plan. Item 8B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a Fourth Amendment to the Mesa Proving Grounds Pre-Annexation and Development Agreement with DMB Mesa Proving Grounds LLC relating to the construction of and reimbursement for public infrastructure for and the provision of city services to the Eastmark Development. Item 9A, act on ordinance repealing and replacing in its entirety the existing Mesa City Code Title V business regulations, Chapter 7 entitled Auctioneers, Pawnbrokers, Scrap Metal Dealers and Second-Hand Dealers, with the simplification and modification of requirements related to the operation and licensing of auctioneers, pawnbrokers, scrap metal dealers, and second-hand dealers in the city of Mesa. Item 9B, act on ordinance amending Title V of the Mesa City Code business regulations by adopting a new Chapter 22 entitled Automated Kiosk, requiring the license and regulation of automated kiosks in the city of Mesa. Item 9C, act on ordinance modifying fees and charges for the Business Services Department. Item 10A, act on subdivision plat Mesa Temple District, the zero block of South Mesa Drive east side, the 400 block of East Main Street south side, the zero block of South Udall both sides, and the zero block of South Lesweare west side. This is located at the southeast corner of Main Street and Mesa Drive. An item 10B, act on subdivision plat Parcel A Final Plat B for Ray Road Commerce Center North, the 7,100 to 7,300 blocks of East Ray Road located east of Power Road on the north side of Ray Road. Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Kevin. I note that Mr. Freeman's made a motion, seconded by Mr. Luna, for approval of the consent agenda. Please cast your vote. The vote is unanimous in favor of the consent agenda. The first item that we have off of the consent agenda is Item 7B. I will briefly summarize what this is. It's a taking to discuss, receive public comment, and take action on an ordinance, a zoning ordinance. This involves the 8,200 to 8,400 blocks of East Baseline Road. It's a subdivision of 54 plus or minus acres, and this is rezoning about 1 and 1/2, 1.6 plus or minus acres. The request will allow for the incorporation of additional acreage into an existing PAD to allow for the development of a residential small-lot subdivision. It has staff recommendation and unanimous planning and zoning board recommendation. We do have a couple of cards to speak on this, so I'll invite these folks to come forward. You have three minutes to share with us whatever you'd like to say about this item. The first is from Mr. Gary Chester. Welcome, Mr. Chester.
Good evening. Thank you. I didn't realize I'd be up first here, so I'll try to get my thoughts together. I want to thank the council for hearing my comments. First of all, I live in Sunland Village East and lived there since 1992, and I'm not against development at all. We like our community. We like good development, but we don't like negative impact too much. I'm worried about the traffic flow, number one, because it appears to me they're talking about 18 additional units there, which could range anywhere from 1,400 to 2,000 square feet. I asked the developer if there was any restrictions on the density of those units, and he said, oh, no, we can't control how many people may or may not live in there. Conceivably, a unit 2,000 square feet, I could see a family having two, maybe three, four kids. You're probably looking at two cars per household there, additional traffic flow coming down there. Years ago, they talked about widening Baseline Road because if any further development going east could cause that corridor to be widened. At the Hawes Interchange there, that's a half a mile from the north entrance of Farnsworth Drive from Sauserman, and once people leave the Sauserman and Baseline going east, that traffic flows pretty well through there most of the time. And this summer's not an issue, but winter's a big issue, especially coming in and out of our north entrance in Sunland Village. I'm wondering what kind of impact this is all going to have at the Hawes Interchange, which is going to be a half a mile further east now. They have another Seminole Four there, and there's a lot of cars coming in and out of there. It's going to back up the traffic coming back, going west, and further going to impact our egress in and out of our village when a winter crowd is here, so that's something I'd like the council to consider. The second thing is, I talked to the developer before the meeting on the park, and I see they have a green space area here towards the north part of that, which I'm wondering what kind of formulation the city uses to determine how much free space area they should have for recreational for families. In other words, if they have kids that need to have a place to play and things of that nature, so thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you, Mr. Chester. Next, we have a card from Beverly Salvage. Welcome back, Ms. Salvage.
I told you last week I'd be back.
Yes, you did.
Council, yes, mayor and councilman, thank you for hearing me. This is more just kind of get things a little clearer here. Anyway, I'm against adding a higher density there, too. We've got the corner by 60 and 202 to also develop later, plus the 318 apartments, and then, of course, the condos down the way that they've added 30 more. I think there's 140 of them plus the new 30. Lots of, lots of density. Anyway, I also want to clear up some of the misstatements that Councilman Thompson said that I was against everything, including the little park. That's not true. I went to the meeting, I've been at several meetings, went to the meeting before they even built the little park, and I was pretty excited about it. I thought it was great for those little kids that are living over there on Hawes in those developments. The thing that I'm concerned about, or was really concerned about, are the children going from this development across. The city was not going to put in the signal light at Hawes, but we had a meeting in Sunland Village East, and Mr. Thompson was kind enough to come and speak to us, plus some city people, and they did put it in, and it's on, and thank you for that. However, I feel that the children are kind of prisoners between heavy traffic on Baseline that will be there and the freeway, and I just don't see any parks of any acreage or an acre or any amount of land in our whole area with all the developing. I also was in favor of the Burger King. There were houses also across from the Walmart on the corner of Hawes and Godalupi. That was two or three years ago. I was in favor of them, but they never got built, okay? I was in favor of the medical facility. The only thing that concerned me was coming out going east on Baseline, which was a good way to put it, not being able to turn around. But we've had several accidents there. I don't know why, and two people from my church were killed there a few months ago, and just last, just within the last 10 days, there was another accident there. I haven't heard if anybody was hurt or what. So anyway, we have a lot of problems there for all this development, and I, you know, is there anything wrong with keeping a green space of some, you know, like instead of a little strip? I mean, I think these kids deserve some quality of life. I mean, not just the people that live in back of those houses, not just us on the retirement, but the people who are going to be privileged to living there. So, anyway, however...
Ms. Salvage, that's your three minutes, so if you could just...
Is it, is it already?
Yes, I'm sorry, you're three minutes up, so go ahead and if you have something to conclude, go ahead and finish.
All right. No, the only thing I'm going to say is that when it came before the planning commission, we didn't get a notice until after the planning was, the meeting was already held, not just me, but people I've talked to. I never got an apology from the city, which I think is due. It doesn't sound like good business to me. Also, I just want to end saying that I hope our government is still of the people, for the people, and by the people.
Thank you, Ms. Salvage.
That's McCain.
It is. Is the applicant represented here tonight?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Anything you'd like to share with us?
Good evening. Susan Demmett with Gamble and Burnham on behalf of Woodside Homes. I'll just make a couple brief comments. This, and I don't have the parcel map, but this is a small two-acre sliver that bifurcated a couple pieces of property that we zoned previously for this site. It is zoned currently for multifamily uses. It has RM4 zoning it, so we are downzoning it to single-family to incorporate this piece into the larger development that we've created. Overall, Woodside Homes has acquired 30 acres, a little over 30 acres, to do this housing development. That includes two different types of housing products. We have 18% of the overall site, which is six acres, dedicated to open space. That includes three community park and amenity areas, and one of those, including the cluster housing portion, which is where these homes would be located, has a community pool that will be built in that portion of the community. As a part of this overall development, we've done improvements to Baseline Road, including widening, adding an additional lane to Baseline Road, and recently installed a traffic signal at the city's request at the corner of Baseline and Hawes. And so we feel like we have tried, and we have worked with Beverly and the residents of Sunland Village for many, many years on this site, but we feel like we have responded to those, you know, those specific comments and concerns and addressed those and incorporated solutions into this project.
Thank you, Ms. Demmett. Council, any questions or comments regarding this matter before we vote? Hearing the, there has been a motion made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Glover. Please cast your vote. The vote is unanimous in favor of the zoning case. The next item off of our consent agenda is Item 7E. This is also a zoning matter. This involves the 1,100 block of South Staple Drive, plus or minus 1.6 acres. This request will allow for the development of an attached single-residence development. We do have a, oh, and it was, had staff approval, and it was recommended by planning and zoning with a five-to-one vote. We have three cards to speak on this. The first is Judith McFarland. Ms. McFarland? Yep. We've allocated three minutes to hear from you.
I've lived at Staple and Southern for almost 40 years now, and I was there probably before anybody else was. One of my homes was the first one. My concern is what's going in, if it's going to be taken care of, if there's going to be security, because as of right now, we have some issues going on with what's going, with what's in the area right now. My dog barks every single night behind our fence. People roam back and forth all the time. They sleep in the corner. They're back behind my wall. My home backs up to the Taros facility, and they're back between that. They're smoking. They're doing things they shouldn't be doing, and I'm just concerned that it's going to draw in more problems for us that have lived there for many years. That's my biggest concern. I don't have a problem with anybody, but I don't want someone in my backyard. I don't think anybody else wants anybody in their backyard, which we've had, and I don't think anybody honestly thinks about the people that have lived there, and that's a concern to me, that the people that have lived there for so long just kind of go by the wayside, and everything that happens, nobody takes into consideration how it's going to affect us, and that's my concern, you know? Like I say, I've lived there for almost 40 years. I've seen people come and go. I've seen things happen, and a lot of things I've seen are not good. I have no issue with anybody, but I do have issues, and I will be on the phone every night calling the police if there are issues, because as it is, I have a dog that barks continuously every single night, and I go to my neighbors and talk to them and apologize, and most of them say they don't have a problem with it because they know that if my dog's barking, there's an issue. So that's my biggest concern, is the security to the people who live in these houses that have been there for a long time. You know, houses have been broken into. People have been over fences. Nobody's come over mine yet because of my dogs. And I used to have a six-foot block wall. The people that are behind me came in, raised my ground, put a curb in behind my wall. Now somebody can just basically jump over the wall and jump into my backyard if they wanted to. They can look right over into my yard, which they didn't used to be able to do, and I don't want people moving into that area and being able to just basically make themselves at home to whatever they would like. That's not fair to the people who have lived there. So, you know, I don't know what else to say, that I'm basically worried about the security of my home. I have a 13-year-old. I don't want my, because my dogs are very vocal, I don't want my dogs poisoned, you know? I don't want something happening to my home. I've been there a long time, and that's pretty much what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. McFarland. Next, we have Leslie Pittson.
Hello. Thank you for hearing me. My biggest problems with the privacy that's going to be taken away because these two-story townhouses are being integrated into our single-story neighborhood, and balconies are facing north and south. There's houses directly to the east, and I am in the prime real estate spot for someone to just know what I'm doing in my backyard the entire time. The complex itself is way too congested for 1.6 acres, 20 townhomes. It doesn't fit the requirements of Mesa for the setback code. It's zero feet on the northern and western side of the complex. If this was a big enough lot, why are they not at least satisfying the code that Mesa put in place? The wall that I'm talking, or the unit itself, is 45 feet from my wall, and again, it has the balcony, which I would really like if they're going to move forward with the complex itself to be removed or somehow make it less visible to see the neighbors that have been there for years. Most neighborhoods like this, if you're integrated into a single-level neighborhood, you'll make the first couple units single-story to integrate better instead of putting two stories in all single level. So I requested that as well, but I never heard back from the developer person. So, yeah, that's my biggest concern. The congestion on Staple and Southern is already massive. We just got notices in the mail that they are widening Staple because of congestion, yet that's the exact spot. They want to put 20 townhouses in 1.6 acres. So those are my concerns. I'm concerned because my, I've lived there only since 2011, but I love my backyard and I love my house, and even though I knew that there's a vacant property behind it, it was supposed to be for business, who is not a 24/7 complex. So, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Pittson. Next, we have Sharon Howden.
Hi. Thank you for hearing me again. I've lived in that neighborhood since '78, and the, there's, the townhouse is going back there. It's going to be a lot of, I don't even know if anybody has looked at the property. I don't know who would buy a townhouse back there. They need to be single-level. They need to be less of them. We need to think about noise because it's going to bounce off of everything. We already have a giant parking lot back there for the Taros, and the paperwork shows existing parking lot. Yeah, that's the Taros parking lot. To be honest with you, with the way that property is set up, if anybody looks, this is all walled in, and this is all, I don't know who would buy a townhouse, and then the Taros Health Center is there. So it's going to be possibly different agencies, because every time I see Taros, the guy comes up, oh, Taros hasn't contacted us, and that was my bad the last time. Different agencies can put sober living in there and distressed families, which I get, but if you guys look at this and two stories, they're looking at all of us, and it's not fair. It's not fair at all, and there's going to be noise, and if people don't want to do their things, that's my fear. I'm going to have more people. I had a guy in my backyard in February, so just saying. They live in the parking lot, and I don't, and I don't want to waste y'all's time, but you guys need to really think about this before you push this through. Can you guys just take some more time before you push it through? SRP after the last meeting was already in the back lot, flagging, and I can see him over my fence. Just y'all think about it. What would you do if it was in your backyard? Because this is not good. Please save our neighborhood. It's Torrey Pines Estates. In about another couple years, we can go for historic. Just help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howden. Is the applicant present? Mr. Pugh.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Ralph Pugh at 1744 South Al Vista Drive here in Mesa. Pleasure to be with you this evening. I'm actually here on behalf of my colleague Reese Anderson. He abandoned us tonight and left me here, so a pleasure to be here on his behalf, and we're representing Edifice Architecture, who's the applicant in this case. Mayor and council, let me just answer the questions that have been raised here tonight. You know, this comes to you with staff recommendation of approval, PNZ recommendation of approval. The question that was raised with respect to security, what you have to realize is that the homes where these neighbors... that the homes where these neighbors live, the ladies that have spoken, are typically behind to the east of this project and surrounding the eastern parking lot for Taros, which is just on Stapley Drive North to Southern. And so, issues with respect to security, in our opinion, concerning that parking lot will be increased and better by having this townhome project developed. There'll be more eyes on that property, there'll be more people there that can watch and pay attention, and the folks that are going to live and buy these townhomes will be equally as concerned about their security as the neighbors are who live to the east and on the north side of the Taros parking lot. So, we urge you to think about that. The other thought is, the lady that mentioned the two-story issue, just want you to know that on the east side of this project, that it's been designed with a twenty-six-foot setback with a landscape buffer, even though they're two stories, there's no windows or patios or decks that face the east where these folks live, so there's no visual penetration into those properties. And, and finally, the last comment that was made, kind of raised a concern that somehow these townhomes are going to become available for folks that have been at Taros or distressed properties or some agencies going to come in and utilize these. Frankly, this is a market-rate townhome development. It is the classic definition of infill. This is an acre and a half behind the commercial center at Stapley and Southern, that northeast corner, which just will not develop as commercial. There's no visibility, so this is a good infill use. It comes to you with recommendations, as I indicated before, and we urge your support, mayor and council, on this matter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Counsel, any discussion or questions regarding this case?
I have one question.
Yep, thank you.
Question for staff. In regards to the concerns about setbacks, have they been appropriately addressed?
Mayor, councilmember, yes, the staff report includes the setbacks that are being applied, and particularly on that east side next to the residential, thirty-foot setback would be required. They're providing a forty-foot setback from the buildings to the property line, so in that particular case, actually exceed the code requirement.
Other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Freeman has made a motion, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Please cast your vote. The vote is six in favor, with Mr. Freeman voting nay, so the motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Agenda Item Eleven. That is to conduct a public hearing prior to the release of the petition for signatures for annexation case ANX eighteen dash zero three zero two for property located south of Thomas Road and west of Haws Road, approximately thirteen-point-seven acres. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mickelson, has anyone requested to speak on this item?
Yes.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers wish to address this item? Thank you. I declare the public hearing closed. There is no action on this item at this time. This annexation case will come back before council at a future council meeting to vote on the annexation of this property. The next item on our agenda is Item Twelve. Items from citizens present. Do we have any requests to speak?
No.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.